Hello. Good evening, everyone. I hereby call the Police Oversight Commission meeting to order on Thursday, May 8, 2025. The time is 5:06 PM. Madam Secretary, can you please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Castillo Lofton. Commissioner Garansky. Commissioner Mejia.
Present.
Commissioner Perrea. Absent. Commissioner Said.
Here, thank you.
Vice Chair Carpenter.
Here.
And Chair Vega.
Here.
Record shows we have six members present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next is a pledge of allegiance. If everybody could please stand.
Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the public comment section. This is the time for the commission to receive comments from the public. We will not accept any additional request for speaker cards once we begin the public comment session. If you have not already, please submit your request to the recording secretary. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Madam Secretary, do we have any public speakers?
There are no in-person speakers at this time, but there is one individual on Zoom that may wish to speak.
Okay.
Manuel Arri...
Arriyin, yes.
Okay.
Can I start?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Manuel Arriyin. I've been trying to get my complaint read by this commission, but understanding that there's no director. And the director seems to be not being moved pretty, you know, not moving at all towards getting to where we need to be for this. It's been over three years. And I run into a problem where my complaint seems to be holding up this thing about the director, where the city council doesn't want to get the director so that my lapse in time will have to pass, and then I won't be eligible. Because right now, I have one that's still up in July. And I just got it today from the commander. And I only noticed this when I went to a city council meeting September 17, where at the timestamp where I'm speaking at 4:42, they let me speak for like about 38 seconds, and then I'm cut off. But then, as I go on to the timestamp of 7:18, I mean, or 7:17, the mayor is speaking, and it just seems like they had to take a recess once they heard my name and I mentioned the commission. And automatically, they stopped me from speaking, and then they took that recess. And when they came back, there were these new rules that the city attorney is putting out that if you watch that video, you'll see that they're speaking to each other. And I couldn't go to the next meeting because it was stated on there that no new speakers could come to that next meeting because it was a continuation of some sort. They never had done it before. But it just seemed like they were stopping me and me reading about not having no director just seemed like it's totally focused on this because I sent the council and the mayor two letters in August. And then, all of a sudden, the chief of police is resigning in, right afterwards, in, I don't know, it was like a month, right? The timestamps just seem to point to that direction. And when I'm reading about the director not being, you know, they're not even understanding what's taking so long. And the city is actually stonewalling, and this points to they don't want my complaint investigated. And I've tried so many times that I have three of them, and two of them have passed. And this one, the last one, is going to pass within two months. So if a director isn't chosen within that time, I'm going to lose out.
Sir, your time is up.
Okay, thank you. Is there any way I could get it any other time?
No, I'm sorry. Speakers are limited to three minutes only.
Chair, there are no additional speakers.
Thank you. That concludes the public comments. We're going to move on to the consent calendar. We have two items, excused absences and the minutes from the regular meeting of April 10, 2025. The recommended action is to approve the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Motion by Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Castillo Lofton. Can you please conduct the roll call?
So that was a motion by Vice Chair Carpenter and a second by Commissioner Castillo Lofton. That was to approve consent calendar items one and two. So Commissioner Castillo Lofton.
Yes.
Commissioner Garansky. Commissioner Mejia.
Yes.
Commissioner Said.
Yes, thank you.
Vice Chair Carpenter.
Yes.
Chair Vega.
Yes.
The vote is six ayes, zero nays, and Commissioner Perrea is absent. The motion carries.
Thank you. That's the end of the consent calendar. Moving on to the business calendar. Item three pertains to U visa certification and the Police Department Procedure 4130. May we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. Commander George Lopez will prepare a presentation for you regarding the U visa certification process, which is one of the items that was discussed at the initial work study of items that the commission wanted to hear.
Great, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Rosa Ponce de León. I'm the commander over the Criminal Investigations Division. I'm here to give you an overview of our U visa process. Our participation in this process is pretty limited, but we do have a significant role, and I'm here to tell you about it. This is governed by one of our procedures, which is 4130. A brief background on this is that the U visa process is a result of the House Bill 3244, which in 2000 was known as the Victim of Trafficking and Violence Protection Act. It was signed into law by the president in 2000. This intent is to strengthen the ability of law enforcement agencies to detect, investigate, and prosecute violent crimes. This is important, and we'll refer back to it often. So the intent, again, is to strengthen our ability to prosecute violent crimes. Specifically, the U visa is designed to provide immigrant crime victims an opportunity to obtain...
I'm so sorry. I'm going to interrupt you real quick. Let the record show that Commissioner Perrea is here now. Sorry about that.
It's okay. All right, I'll continue. So specifically, it's designed to provide immigrant crime victims an opportunity to obtain temporary legal status and some protection against deportation during the process of prosecution. So with that, since the intent is to help law enforcement prosecute against certain crimes, then there should probably be a process to identify which crimes are qualified and in what way can this victim help prosecute the case. And with that, it is called helpfulness toward the case. So this is governed in the state of California by Penal Code 679.10. I'm going to paraphrase it for you. Essentially, it designates that a qualifying agency can designate a qualifying official. In our department, it is a supervisor within the Criminal Investigations Division to review these requests and certify them for victim helpfulness. And victim helpfulness is also defined in the statute as the likelihood or the ability of that victim to provide helpfulness toward the case. The victim is considered helpful when they do not refuse or don't fail to, there's no failure upon request to assist with the case. So if they're interviewed, they provide a statement. If they saw something, they give valuable information toward the prosecution. So this assistance is reasonably requested and complied by the victim. Another important thing to note is that there is a set of parameters. When these requests come in, we have to process them within 30 days, with the exception is if the noncitizen is in removal proceedings, then that gets jumped into 70-day process. We do have a procedure in place that complies with this requirement. So when we get the request, we look at the request on its face. We don't look at anything else. We look at the particular investigation in question. We look to see how the victim is involved in the case, and we look to see that a crime actually occurred that is relevant. And on its face, the request includes details of how the crime is relevant and in which way was the victim helpful toward the investigation. When we process the request and those conditions are not met, then the details are included where specific details of requests for cooperation were not met.
I have a question. Would you rather me wait till the end or ask throughout?
I'll leave time at the end.
Okay.
So like I said, the case is investigated on its own merit. We do not look at anything else, whether the victim is involved in other cases in other jurisdictions, whether the victim cooperated in other cases, whether their citizenship status is in question. We don't look at anything other than the case, their participation in the case, their ability to help. And here's a list of the qualifying crimes. And the important thing to note here is, again, we're looking to prosecute violent crimes, which, again, are listed. There's quite a few, and it's not limited to these crimes. But for the most part, these are what's listed. But the important thing to note here is that it also includes attempts to commit these crimes, conspiracy to commit these crimes, or solicitation to commit these crimes. So if the crime hasn't occurred, but the solicitation, the attempt, or the conspiracy has occurred, those are also qualifying. So the designated supervisor processes this request, and that's pretty much the end of our role. However, there are also some cases where we are not the best entity suited to provide this determination. There are cases where the case has now moved to the DA's office for prosecution. The district attorney is best suited to determine the helpfulness of the victim. In those cases, we then reply to the victim that they should resubmit their application to the district attorney's office, and they can be processed in that way. There are very few cases, but in some cases, the crime didn't occur in Santa Ana. We then refer them to the correct agency. In other few cases, we have situations where the form is not fully completed or there's some missing items, and we just can't certify it. And this is a five-year overview. Pretty consistently, this is what it looks like every year. But in the five years, as you can see, there's about 40%, 45% of the cases where they are certified. In the orange, what you'll see is cases where there just wasn't the helpfulness that is needed for the criteria to be met, or the crime didn't qualify. And in those cases, it's about 30%, 35%. And in the gray is where you capture the situations where we're not the best suited to give that determination, and so we refer them to the correct agency to do that. There's a bigger process that is governed by the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services Agency. They do govern all the issuance of visas. The Santa Ana Police Department doesn't issue any visas. We have, again, that's very small role in the U visa process. And so, once we approve them, it leaves our hands, and it's left with the USCIA for complete adjudication of the application. There's no obligation for an agency to participate in this U visa process. We're happy to provide this service. We think it's important. We believe that prosecuting violent crimes is important, and the U visa is a great way for us to help our victims to prosecute the case. We have been participants for a long time, and we've been providing annual reports. This is a requirement since 2017. And our efficiencies are in place, and we are pretty good at our turnaround times to where we've met the deadlines of 30 days and seven days where they apply. And at this time, when I was doing my research, we had nothing in the queue. So we're doing pretty good on that. And at this point, I can open it up for questions. Go ahead.
I have a lot, but I will ask and then let others ask, too.
Okay.
So I hear a lot about helpfulness, and I see it both on the policy that you provided as well as on the website. And I'm curious, how does Santa Ana PD define helpful? And can you provide an example of what you do consider helpful?
Sure. Again, when a crime occurs, testimony and the statement of a victim or a strong witness is a method of cooperating. It is a piece of evidence that is entered into evidence in the prosecution, and further prosecution will require testimony in a court of law. But in our preliminary investigation, we interview those present, and depending on what information they provide, we determine whether a crime occurred. It corroborates other evidence. And if that information is helpful and the witness continues to cooperate and corroborate when there's follow-ups, that's considered helpfulness.
Yeah, I think I would still like further clarification, and particularly because what I'm really interested is, the intent of this bill was to help victims, right? And so to help victims and law enforcement, right? So in one end, to ensure that law enforcement is able to prosecute violent crimes. And on the other end, it's also to allow safety for victims to come forward and, you know, be vocal about the offenses that they have been experiencing. But when I hear you say about helpful and how that's defined, it's still a little bit unclear to me. And I think that it would be helpful to be a little bit more specific. And the reason for that is because my understanding from reading this, and I looked it up, is that there's different states of the process, right? So the person can just report, and that seems to be sufficient. And how helpful that might be at that stage, as opposed to if somebody's already on trial, can vary, right? And so my understanding is that Santa Ana PD is the first door of just getting it stamped, whether this is or isn't. You're not making a decision whether this person is getting a U visa or not. You're just certifying whether they can apply for the initial one. And so I'm curious as to what does helpful really mean to Santa Ana PD, given that you are just in the very beginning stages?
Sure, sure. And there was a lot there. I'll speak to a few points, and you can follow up if needed. But one of the things you mentioned is reporting a crime. So if I know that a crime occurred, but I didn't witness it, that alone would not qualify. It just means that I have some awareness that a crime occurred, and you should probably go look over there. And if, when we look, we find that a crime did in fact occur, and you're not a witness to it, then that would not be a helpful witness. If we look and we find, in fact, a crime did occur, it's a qualifying crime, and the person involved is in some way applying for this U visa, and that person has primary witness testimony or precipitant witness, I saw it with my own eyes, that person would be considered helpful, provided that they do in fact give a testimony and are in fact willing to prosecute and are in fact willing to go and testify.
And I think that's my question, right? So like, how does Santa Ana PD decipher when that helpfulness meets our criteria and to what extent? And I wonder, because, let's say, for example, right, that individuals might not feel safe to further report. Is Santa Ana PD actually providing the services to ensure safety for these individuals prior to that?
The best we can do for any witness who feels unsafe, because all witnesses, in some way, might feel threatened, might feel like there might be retaliation. That's very common. I'm not quite sure what you mean by providing safety. We can't be a security force for anyone. But what we do say is, look, I know you're afraid. We are here to help work through some of that, and we can have a conversation about where this fear is coming from, what exact things are happening that we can mitigate. And then, it's a relationship. And so where that relationship exists, that it's mutually beneficial in terms of you're talking to me, you're giving me information that has helped me build the case, then in that case, it's considered helpful. But if at some point, you're so afraid that you don't answer your phone, you went away, and despite my best efforts, I'm just not getting anything else, I can't certify that you're helpful because you're not. You failed to now respond to the request.
And I think that that is where the discretion is exactly, right? So for example...
I don't think we have discretion there.
So how long does... You have 30 days, right?
To process the claim, yes.
To process a claim? So in those 30 days, there could be a lot of things happening, right? So like, let's say, for example, there's an initial report of a crime. And let's say I am a witness, and I am undocumented, so I'm filing for the U visa. And so, at this point, there's no room for anything else to decipher whether I'm being cooperative or not, aside from filing the claim, right? So do you just wait on the cases until they continue?
So maybe I can clarify a little further because, so the claim can come in at any point. The crime could have occurred a year ago. It could have occurred whenever. So based on what I have right now at the time of processing, I'm able to make that determination. If the witness gave a statement and the investigator in charge of the case either followed up or didn't, but at no point was there a refusal to cooperate, then I can certainly consider that victim to be helpful. But if the victim refused and is no longer available, then I can't in good conscience consider that person a cooperative or helpful witness.
I do understand that, and I think maybe what I'm really asking is, is this a Santa Ana PD protocol? Is this written in, like, federal policy? Is this actually defined somewhere? And the reason for that is because I can see how that can be, that can create a lot of rejection in cases. So for example, if how you are defining helpful is full, completely 100% cooperation, but not giving the individual the access to protection, then it's kind of counterintuitive to say to someone, hey, I cannot protect you. And I understand that you can stay at someone's house outside and protect them. I understand that. But you're also not providing anything, and you're saying, you gave us some information. Thank you, but not good enough. And I will only certify this if you continue to do X, Y, and Z, even though this person might feel unsafe or depending on the severity of the crime.
Sure. So let's go back to the intent of the legislation. The intent of the legislation is to help law enforcement prosecute, detect, and investigate crimes. That's what it's about. And so that investigation requires active cooperation where there's follow-up needed to build the case. When it goes to prosecution, the DA's office is best suited. But yes, that continued relationship is there, and this is why we want this person to have temporary legal status so that they can be available for that. And so in those cases, we do do that. But in fact, the helpfulness portion is defined in law, and I did have a slide on that. It's defined in Penal Code. I'd have to review it, but I think it was 679.10, off memory, don't quote me, but it is on there. And it's 679.10, and it is defined as, the victim helpfulness is defined as is, has been helpful, or is likely to be helpful to the detection or investigation or prosecution of that qualifying criminal activity.
Yeah, and that can be applied differently. It's exactly my point. of rejection in cases. So, for example, if how you are defining helpful is full, completely a hundred percent cooperation, but not giving the individual the access to protection, then it kind of, it's kind of counterintuitive to say to someone, "Hey, I'm not, I cannot protect you," and I understand that, you can stay at someone's house outside and protect them, I understand that, but you're also not providing anything, and you're saying, "You gave us some information, thank you, but not good enough, and I will only certify this if you continue to do X, Y, and Z," even though this person might feel unsafe, or depending on the, you know, severity of the crime.
Sure. So, let's go back to the intent of the legislation. The intent of the legislation is to help law enforcement prosecute, detect, and investigate crimes. That's what it's about. And so, that investigation requires active cooperation, where there's follow-up needed to build the case. When it goes to prosecution, the DA's office is best suited. But yes, that continued relationship is there, and this is why we want this person to have temporary legal status, so that they can be available for that. And so, in those cases, we do do that. But in fact, the helpfulness portion is defined in law, and I did have a slide on that. It's defined in Penal Code. I'd have to review it, but I think it was six seventy-nine point one zero, off memory, don't quote me, but it is on there. And that, and it's six seventy-nine point one zero, and it is defined as, the victim helpfulness is defined as is, has been helpful, or is likely to be helpful to the detection or investigation or prosecution of that qualifying criminal activity.
Yeah, and that can be applied differently. It's exactly my point.
Okay. I mean, they're helpful or likely to be helpful during the investigation. It's pretty clear-cut. We approve a lot of them, because they are, in fact, meeting this criteria.
I was informed that, actually, maybe that can be a different question. I don't want to deviate too much, and I'll let others ask, but...
I don't know if I'm missing something here, but, so, this is to protect a victim from deportation. If this wasn't in place, is, does police normally ask for immigration status if somebody comes forward? So, I'm trying to understand if this is even needed in a place like Santa Ana, that we're a sanctuary city.
That's up to the victim to decide if they need it or not. We don't decide for them. They decide to apply for this option that is there for them, and when they do, we process their request.
From our standpoint, they don't need it, technically, right? Because we're not...
It's not, it's not our decision.
So, we're not going to...
We would hope that our...
Contact ICE, right?
We would hope that our victims feel safe enough, that they may not feel like they need it, and in the cases where they don't feel like they need it, they may not apply. But again, we don't involve ourselves in any of that.
So, even like, if they qualify for any of these things, like, it almost seems like it doesn't matter, because Santa Ana PD shouldn't be asking for the immigration status, and shouldn't be...
We don't.
Yeah.
We don't. And I'll tell you, before I promoted and was behind a desk, I was out in the field, and there were cases where we saw, like, I can think of one specific case, where I responded to a landlord-tenant dispute, and I could clearly see there were tensions between the landlord and the tenant. And there was something more going on than the issue of, "What are you guys fighting about?" And it became apparent to me that the landlord was threatening the tenant with calling INS if they talked to me. So, obviously, I had to dig through that. So, now I shifted my investigation and had to remind both parties, "Hey, that's not what's going to happen here. We certainly aren't going to call INS. We just want to know what happened. We're here to protect your peace. We're here to protect you from being assaulted, victimized in any way, and we're going to do that no matter who you are." And so, I had to spend some time with both parties to let them know that that wasn't going to fly.
Oh, so, the person committing the crime...
Two citizens, not the police.
Yeah. I guess I can see that part now. The person who committed the crime is now threatening the person, "I know you're undocumented. Stay quiet, or else I'm going to call."
Right. And so, we actually spend more time letting people know, "You are, you are safe. No one gets to commit any crime. The law doesn't distinguish between one victim or another. You can't stab one person, but it's okay to stab the person who's not undocumented. Nobody needs to be stabbed." So, again, as a police department, it's not up to us to determine what that person wants to take advantage of or not.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Pirello.
Thank you, Chair Vega. And just to, more on the spirit of the U-Visa program is essentially to ensure that, to improve public safety in communities, particularly for communities that are largely immigrant refugee communities, historically, there has been a hesitation for victims of crimes or witnesses of crimes to come forward and collaborate with the police department, or throughout the process of the investigation. So, the U-Visa was implemented in place to ensure that those that are undocumented feel confident to be able to come forward as a witness, as a victim, collaborate with the police department, and on top of that, there is some formal reparation to that, which is the U-Visa process, which allows individuals to get certified by the police department, submit application to DHS, that actually comes with a work permit, the ability to have a work permit, because now you're adjusting. You are demanding an immigration benefit, because you were a victim of a crime, and you have been collaborative. And eventually, in many cases, that work permit, visa process allows you to become a permanent resident, and then essentially citizens. It's a pathway to citizenship for those that have been a victim of crime, precisely why we're very interested about how this has been implemented in Santa Ana, particularly because we do have a lot of community members that have been victims of crimes, that need to come forward. We want folks to come forward, because we want safer streets, but the immigration status usually hangs over them when something happens. So, more in the background, of the spirit of the law, and why it's needed, and that leads to some form of actually adjustment of status for individuals. Thank you for the presentation. Can you remind me again of your name, please? I am so sorry.
I'm Rosa Poncelion.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. One of the questions that I have, more questions, but more about the commission to be able to receive more consistent data. Well, the first question that I have, the reports that are made on the U-Visa certification, are they sent to the chief or the city council? What are those reports being sent to?
So, as a participating agency, these are done online, and we just enter data as requested.
So, this is report to the federal government? Okay.
They probably want to track their own program.
Okay. So, the reason why I'm curious about that is, I think it will be in the best interest of, on the commission, to receive this type of information, not monthly, but quarterly, for us to see how many cases have been certified, how many pieces apply, how many cases have been denied. I think there's interest from myself, just to understand, you know, how this is working in the city of Santa Ana. I know that this is more on percentages, but I don't see numbers. I would love to know, like, what has been the total numbers over the five-year period? And then, even those quarterly reports can be included, the specific reasons why each case was denied or certified, obviously, not disclosing names, right? But like, I think, I think that, as we look into recommending policy for the city of Santa Ana, and, you know, best ways on how we actually can make things better, I think the data will be important for us. This is the first time I'm seeing, like, this type of data, and so, that will be very helpful for us. In the question of the, when the cases are being sent to the district attorney's office, is there any follow-up from the police department as to the status of those certifications requests?
No, we actually don't send the case to the DA's office. We reply to the request. Our process has to be that we send the form back with comments, and then, no, we don't follow up to see if they then sent it to the district attorney's office. In most cases, they have attorneys submit these for them, so we believe in good faith that they have proper representation, and probably don't need our help beyond that.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I'm sometimes very skeptical of immigration attorneys. There's been a lot of scams in the community. So, but I think the comments that are being sent back to the applications are the comments essentially saying, "Hey, this is the reason why we leave. You should go to the DA. Does it have anything else helpful?" I'm guessing, you know, I work with attorneys, I have hired immigration attorneys before, and usually, they only let me know when things are rejected or apply for. But sometimes, I think, understanding, like, you know, more of like, the reasons why they're denied is important. So, I was just wondering if there was an extra step to, like, follow up on these cases, if they are being, you know, the persons, individuals being told, "Hey, you got to send it to the DA."
We do take phone calls, if they call us, and we try to explain things. That's about as good as that gets. But again, we don't, we don't go back and do any more advocacy beyond that. It's not, it's not our role. We have to be unbiased and really stick to our scope.
That makes sense. In terms of the ability for residents to call regarding, you know, follow-up applications, is this a number that exists on the city website?
I'm not sure if it does, but if anyone calls our police department, our general line, they do get routed to us. I've even gotten a voicemail or two that I then route to our supervisor responsible, but they do get to us.
Okay, that makes sense. This is a request that continue to add on the website, not your rights page, the city website is like, there's, I think there's more information that need to be added, including, like, the line to the U-Visa officer, in this case, it's you, and also, this data being also available. I think that throughout this commission study sessions that we've been having, we have seen a lot of different need of data that are, we're finally getting able to dig into, and I think the public might have same questions around this. But yeah, thank you for the presentation. I have more questions, but I'll hold off.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, I have a quick question. The U-Visa would not apply to any kind of civil suit against the city or a police complaint?
It specifically says we cannot be involved in that, so...
Okay, thank you.
Hi. I have a question. I want to go back to the helpfulness standard, and I think just pigging, piggybacking off of what my fellow commissioner was asking about, is that, you know, the helpfulness standard seems to have a lot of subjectivity built into it, because people have different ideas of what constitutes being helpful, you know? And I was just wondering if, when you're making those determinations about whether somebody is helpful, is there, like, are there written criteria that the Santa Ana Police Department, like, has to follow or consider in making that determination?
So, that we stick to the statute, and just, any investigator dealing with any witness who's reluctant to cooperate, we are very skilled in trying to gain that cooperation, because it's important. And again, a lot of it has to do with overcoming some of the fears that are there, and we can't promise anyone that they're going to be safe, absolutely, but we do obviously give them some suggestions of how they can keep themselves safe. Obviously, anyone could call 911 at any point, and, you know, lock your doors and things like that. But aside from that, we cannot guarantee anyone anything, but we still are very skilled at gaining that cooperation, where they're going to be willing, but we can't make them do it. So, where they are refusing, and they are unavailable by their choices, that's pretty clear-cut. I mean, there's really not a lot of wiggle room there.
Yeah, and I know that there are some examples where it's going to be very obvious, like, you know, you ask somebody a pretty straightforward question about a crime that occurred, and they just don't want to talk to you. But what, I guess what I'm struggling with is, what about the situations in the middle, where it's, you know, maybe they want to cooperate, but they don't remember all the details, because it happened really fast, or something like that, or like, you know, maybe they are concussed and they forgot, or, you know, something like that. In that situation, where somebody might want to be helpful and is doing what they can to help the police department, but maybe they can't provide very specific information, but they're willing to testify, or something like that, like, in those situations, like...
We do have cases where people reapply. If, right now, based on what I have, I don't have the helpfulness, I don't have the material, the data from your testimony that is helpful toward the prosecution, maybe right now, I can't certify it, but if in two weeks, you're medically better and remember more things, and there's more there, then maybe the situation has changed. We do have, in the other category of the statistics, there are some very few cases where there are repeat requests, and in some cases, we do change our mind, because there's more information, or the investigation has changed in some way, and in those cases, at that time, we are able to certify. But in those gray areas, it's just, again, it comes down, "What do I have in front of me right now?"
And how many people are involved in making determinations about helpfulness in the police department?
The supervisor, the one supervisor.
Oh, it's just one person?
But again, that supervisor's calling the detective, is calling, is reading the report. There's people weighing in that are engaged in that investigation that can adequately comment.
Okay. And is there any sort of appellate process within the police department specifically that somebody could pursue if they disagree with the decision that the Santa Ana Police Department made? So, for example, like, if the supervisor reviews a case and says, "I don't think this person's helpful," do they have any recourse within, like, the police department for reconsideration, for example?
We don't have an appellate process. We do talk to people when they call us, and if they, if there's a case where they can reapply, they reapply, and we revisit the case. But we don't really have a tiebreaker, if that's what you're seeking.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, like, if somebody wanted, if somebody disagreed with the decision, do they have a way to basically be reevaluated? And the reason I ask that is because it would be hard for somebody to challenge a decision if they don't have, there's no criteria by which, like, they can hold somebody accountable, meaning like, you know, when you're evaluating helpfulness, these are the things that you have to consider, and you didn't consider those things, you just classified me as being unhelpful, and so, therefore, procedurally, like, you didn't follow the right procedure. And I get that there's the statute and everything, and that has helpful language, but there's also ambiguity in the statute itself, because it says, "If somebody has been helpful or is likely to be helpful," like, helpful, whether someone's helpful or not is going to depend on the person who's making that determination. Or, for example, it says, like, "If the person provided information, or refused, or failed to provide information and assistance reasonably requested," like, what does it mean to...
So, I actually think the ambiguity, if I read this correctly, is in favor of saying that they're helpful, because I'm saying, "You're likely to be helpful. You don't even have to be helpful. You just, you have, you have information, and you're likely to be helpful. That's a helpful person." And then, if you don't refuse my calls, and you don't fail to cooperate when I made a reasonable effort to ask you a question, that's helpful. But if I call you and you fail to cooperate, or if I made a reasonable effort and you failed to cooperate, that is not helpful. It's, that part is pretty clear-cut.
Yeah. And I think, I guess what I'm getting at is, I think it might be a good idea for the Santa Ana Police Department to have some sort of written protocol that they operate off of in making a helpfulness determination, because then, when somebody calls, and I know that, like, you know, according to the requirements, the Santa Ana Police Department is supposed to provide a written, a detailed explanation about why they found somebody was unhelpful. But I just think, from a policy standpoint, it would be maybe a good idea for the Santa Ana Police Department to have some, some protocol that they can, you know, use in making those determinations, that can be passed down from supervisor to supervisor, so that when people call in, they feel like they're being treated fairly. You know, you can point to something and say...
And we do have the policy. The policy is in line with the statute.
Oh, okay, so there is a policy?
Yes, it's forty-three. I labeled it right in the front. It's listed in there.
It's what we have, but it's still subjective to his point. It's not clear.
We have to adhere to the definition of the statute. And again, the ambiguity, in my mind, the way I read it, is in favor of helpfulness. If, it's pretty clear-cut, if I ask you a question and you say, "I don't want to prosecute."
Yeah.
"Are you interested in prosecuting this criminal? No, I do not want to prosecute." That's pretty clear-cut.
I mean, I will just say, I'm a lawyer, and I, you know, like, ambiguity is, it can be good and it can be bad, you know? It just depends on the person who's making the judgment call. If the person who's making the decision is in favor of, you know, maybe they're a little more lenient, they can use the ambiguity to help people. But if somebody wants to abuse their power, I'm not saying that's what the Santa Ana Police Department does, but in other contexts, they can use ambiguity to shut people out. And the benefit of having written criteria, and it doesn't have to be, you know, anything super detailed, but it could just be like, factors that you consider, like, for example, you know, helpfulness means, like, you know, when we ask them to provide us names or details about an event, they cooperated and provided that information, something like that, you know? Like, they could be just factors that you consider.
And that is done. So, again, when, not only when the petition is made, that petitioner provides those details in the form, and so, we're able to assess those details, the investigation, and whatever else is available, to determine their helpfulness. And in most cases, we do say that they're helpful, but in clear-cut cases where they're not wanting to prosecute, which is very common, they're clearly saying, "I do not want to prosecute. I do not want to be a victim of this crime." We documented it, we investigated it, but we can't take it to court. That's the end of the road for that.
I understand, yeah. So, I guess I'll just, I'll just conclude with the recommendation that the Santa Ana Police Department maybe consider implementing something that's more objective, that they can point to and say, "These are the, these are the factors that we considered in determining whether, you know, somebody was helpful or not, and this is what we adhere to, and based on the answers to these questions, we will say, yes, they're helpful, or they're not helpful." I just have one other question. So, if, the requirements say that the certifying entity has to provide specific details about why they refuse to certify somebody in the event that they do so?
The specific details are defined as, specific details of efforts made to try to gain cooperation, and where the failure occurred.
Okay.
So, those have to be in the form in some form.
Yeah, so that would be a really good thing to include in, like, a written policy for the Santa Ana Police Department. But my question on that is, what happens if the Santa Ana Police Department doesn't provide that? Is, I mean, is there any recourse for...
When the form is not certified...
Yes.
And there's not clarity about why it wasn't certified, they can call us. We'll take the call.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
I have further questions.
One second, let me just make sure the other commissioners will like to say something. Commissioner Said, Commissioner Geronski? Okay, second round. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Be patient, I have a lot to say.
You gonna go, or am I gonna go?
I'm gonna go, and then you go.
Mine's a quick one, but go ahead.
Fine, I'll be kind. I'll let you go first.
Thank you, you're so kind. The scenarios you're outlining for cooperativeness would apply to a citizen just as equally as a non-citizen, correct? as a noncitizen, correct? So there is no different criteria for cooperativeness between a citizen and a noncitizen, correct?
Correct.
So there really isn't a lot of ambiguity, in my opinion, and not a lot of ambiguity, because you're either cooperating or you're not.
Right.
And you have the choice as a citizen, you can say, no, I don't want to, or you can say, yes, I will consider to pursue.
Sure.
My other question for you is, how long does one of these UVs's last?
I don't know. We have no say in that.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Sure.
Thanks, which you, you know, set up my question perfectly fine. So I think I agree with Gabe, what he was mentioning about having a protocol that actually is very specific, right, to how helpfulness is defined. And I think that one of the issues that it's really hard to grasp, at least for me, is that when I see your numbers about 45% being certified, which I'm glad it's 45%, I wished it was more, but this 35% considered not helpful, right? That's still a significant amount of cases, I assume. I don't have the magnitude of them, but I assume that a 35% should be substantial of, like, what you're defining as not helpful. And I think maybe part of it is too, one, my understanding is the San Ana PD's role is to certify, not to adjudicate these UVs's, right? So you're just saying, I certified that this occurred. So, and I think that's where my part goes, like, why, is it, I guess my question is, is it in San Ana PD's role to further investigate helpfulness, or is this part of later what the federal department should be considered, what helpfulness was determined at the end? Because my understanding is you're just certifying whether this happened or not, correct?
So the reason we would certify a case is because that crime occurred in our city and we're the best to determine whether that person was involved in the qualifying crime and whether they're helpful. And if I understand your question correctly, we do not investigate further the helpfulness. It's what do we have right now, and either they're helpful or they're not.
Yeah, exactly. And I think that that is what it is, right? In some cases, if they're in the initial stages, helpfulness can mean that they made the report to the crime and they cooperated with you. In other cases, if they're at the stage where the crime is further being investigated, then that helpfulness criteria might differentiate and differ in terms of what you are considering helpful. And I think to Gabe's point earlier, some individuals who are in this, you know, status are not the same, I would disagree actually with Keith, that they're not the same as someone who's a citizen and has legal status. They're, the way they navigate, you know, systems is very differently. So I think my question, I still would like further information on what helpfulness means to ensure that there's no disparities. I think if, so you said you collected data and you reported to the federal government. I'm curious as to if you have, like, more specific detail of data of what indicators, like, who are the cases that are being rejected and why?
It's up to the petitioner whether they want to prosecute or not. We, it's a very common thing within prosecuting any crime. The most common occurrence that happens when we can't prosecute someone is a victim who doesn't want to prosecute. That happens a lot. Or a key witness who just doesn't want to testify and doesn't want to go before. That happens a lot. Citizenship or not, whatever the status is, it happens a lot.
Yeah, because they're a victim.
Sure.
And I think that we're forgetting that portion.
We do our best to help them get through that, but at the end of the day, they get to make that choice. It's not up to us.
It is up to you guys. I think we just disagree on that. And so I'm going to read you something that is actually on the federal website. "The legislation was intended to strengthen the ability of law enforcement agencies to investigate and prosecute cases of domestic violence, sexual assault, trafficking of aliens and other crimes, while also protecting victims of crimes who have suffered substantial mental or physical abuse due to the crime and are willing to help law enforcement authorities in the investigation or prosecution of the criminal activity. Nor word does it say that this has to end or result in a prosecution." And it almost seems, what I'm interpreting from hearing you, is that San Ana PD's requirement of what it is to certify is actually higher than what the federal government is saying.
I'm not clear where we're not in tune with the law.
So here it says, investigation or prosecution, it doesn't say end, right? So if you say or, it's this or that. And what I'm hearing you say is this and that.
So the purpose of any investigation is to prosecute a case. A crime occurred, we prosecute the case. And this is where that whole likely to be helpful is a qualifying language for helpfulness.
Yeah, but even in the federal, language is not there. It's this or.
Excuse me, if I may just interject for a minute, I would like to offer the City Attorney's Office as a resource to research the issue of helpfulness and to come back at a later meeting with kind of an analysis of what either authorities, case law, or other secondary sources may have and may shed light on that particular topic. So I'm offering that, and I'm not trying to stop the conversation we're having, but I think that there's a lot of interest in this idea of helpfulness and how it's interpreted and how it could be legally applied in this case. So with that, I wanted to just propose that possibility for the commission to consider.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, can I ask something, please? Can I get my hand in here? Commissioner Mejia, use the two words verify and certify. What's the difference, what is the definition between the two?
I don't know that we use a different language. We use certify.
To certify or to verify?
Certify, we're signing and saying, yes, this is, it's like a certificate, right? We're signing and we're saying this in fact qualifies or not.
Okay, and then to verify is to?
Is to ascertain that what's there is true.
In other words, by word of mouth, correct? And certify is to put it in writing?
That could be one way to state it, in my understanding, sure.
I said, yeah, I use certification and adjudication, so yes, San Ana PD certifies the, if this incident occurred or it's substantial to continue, but San Ana PD doesn't confirm whether they get UVs's, right? That's the federal government. And so my point is exactly that. So if you have stricter thresholds about what helpfulness means, then you're going to have, let's say, for example, there's 100 people who apply, and they were being helpful to some extent, right? Let's say there's a victim of a sexual rape case, and this victim doesn't want to prosecute for many other reasons, right? I would disagree that whether it's a choice or not at that point, because there's a lot of factors that happen in that situation. So if you're saying that maybe they were helpful by identifying someone and giving you enough details, right? But if then San Ana PD says, you know what, you were helpful, but not helpful enough because you chose not to prosecute, so now out of those 100 cases, maybe there's what, 45%? Let's keep the numbers, 45, you said, were helpful. 45 go sent out to federal government, federal government decides whether they get the UVS or not. San Ana PD doesn't determine that. They just determine whether they're certifying about this incident. And I'm saying that by having such subjectivity in this decision, then we're not really allowing people that they were somewhat helpful probably, that could have also been able to obtain a UVS.
What I'm questioning here, asking, is how can you certify without verifying to begin with? If you certify and you put it in writing and that's it? If you verify and you discuss it?
If I can just-
Then you decide whether to certify it or not.
Can I just jump in for a quick second? I just want to clarify, Commissioner Mejia, when we talked about helpfulness, if they had been helpful for a crime, then that is something that we went forward with. When they're not helpful anymore, it's when we actively request information and they refuse to then come back and provide additional information or information of a witness, is that correct? So I just want to make sure that the helpfulness, it's when we reach back out to them and they say, we don't want to help anymore. Or we're no longer able to get them to come to us for those additional questions.
I would like to make a- In that case, I'm sorry, Vice Chair, in that case, would you tell that person, okay, if you're not going to continue to, quote unquote, be helpful, then your UVS application might be in jeopardy?
We certainly don't do that. So the person investigating the case is different than the person doing the certifying. The supervisor who's reviewing the case and looking for cooperativeness or helpfulness is just looking at that. They aren't calling, hey, what happened in this crime to the victim, right? We're not involved in that. They're different people. And no, we don't leverage that as an option.
Can I make a motion that we have a study session as suggested by our city attorney to really dig into the helpfulness issue, because we can kick this around for quite some time? And I'm not trying to minimize it, I appreciate everybody's point of view on it, but I think it would be nice to have that as the topic of discussion for that meeting. If that's acceptable, I'll make that motion.
Can I clarify? I just, it would be helpful that, I think, I agree that would be a good thing to do, but it would also be helpful to have, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name.
Ponse de Leon.
What is it?
Ponse de Leon. Ponse de Leon.
Oh, Ponse de Leon. I think it would be helpful to have Ms. Ponse de Leon here to talk about how the helpfulness standard is applied, with a little more context for us, too.
Sure.
I totally agree with that, I wasn't limiting anybody. So, yeah, that's fine with me, so, somebody wants to second that?
I second that.
Yeah, can I also add a friendly amendment to that to include? This issue of interpretation, it's not the first time it has come up here in the city of Santa Ana, it has come up across many jurisdictions. So if we can look at City Attorney Martinez, of different policies of different jurisdictions around UVS certification specifically, I think this conversation, when the UVS was recently implemented, a lot of these questions and concerns were raised, I remember during that time, because many people were being denied certifications precisely on the question of, is this going to lead up to a conviction or not? But nevertheless, the victim is still at risk if they came forward to speak. And so I think that it will be helpful to have those, look into those different policies in areas that they have tackled this issue as well. And if we can have also experts that focus on UVS certification law, so we can be the best informed as well. So I will, yeah, I'll support with that, but with the amendment to include, like, experts from the field on this as well.
I agree to the other, just so we make sure we're all clear on this, we would like this to be an agenda item, not something that gets kicked down the road for a while. I do have one quick question for you. In regards to your graph, what is the percentage of citizens that don't cooperate? Is it comparative?
It ranged over the five years between, like, I want to say 25, 30%.
So slightly less?
Sure, yes, slightly less than 30, right.
Okay, thank you, Ms.
It was in the 40% for the cooperative.
I have a follow-up question.
40 to 44.
I have another question. How, like, how strict is this process? When someone calls in and says, I was a victim of a crime and I would like, you know, to go through the certification process and I'd like for you to consider me helpful, how strict is the Santa Ana Police Department in evaluating, or like, how stringent are they in evaluating somebody's allegations? Because I think, at least for me, like, I've come in with the assumption that there are some really difficult cases where, you know, somebody is providing information that is helpful, but maybe it's not helpful enough, according to, based on whoever's making that evaluation. But maybe it's not, maybe that's not the case. Maybe it's the case that all 35% of the denials were people who outright refused to cooperate and/or provide information.
There's not a lot of ambiguity on the refusals. Again, we make our best efforts to try to get our witnesses to come forward and provide testimony. Again, the objective of this legislation is to help law enforcement to prosecute, investigate and detect these crimes. Our role isn't as much in the prosecution, we do kick that over to the DA's office, but the helpfulness is almost assumed, provided that when we call, they answer the phone and they provide us-
I guess that's what I'm getting at. Is there a presumption of helpfulness? Meaning, like, we're going to consider you-
The way the code is written, yes. Like, maybe I haven't called you in a year and maybe the case is trailing or whatever, but when we've called you, you've cooperated. That's a cooperative witness.
Yeah, I guess that, okay, so that's helpful to know, is that there's a presumption of considering somebody to be helpful until they refuse to provide information. I guess the situations that I'm concerned about is where somebody provides information, but it's not information that's strong enough to result in a conviction or something like that.
We don't get involved in that. At that point, the DA's office is best determined. But again, that's not even a consideration. Whether we think the crime is going to result in a conviction or not, it has nothing to do with our certification. We don't even look at that.
Okay. Or another example would be like, the example that I raised earlier, which is, somebody has some information, but, you know, maybe their memory, like, I don't know, they had some situation where they can't provide as, you know, detailed information as, you know, somebody else that supplied or something like that. But the spirit is that they want to help, right? They want to work with law enforcement in a situation like that.
They're cooperating, we call in them, they're answering.
Exactly.
Right.
Okay, why?
I think we should take a vote on the motion before we forget. Can we do that first?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion by Vice Chair Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Mejia, and that is to bring back the item of the topic of helpfulness as a study session item with examples of different policies of the UVS certification. Correct?
And can we have that at the next meeting? Can we request to have that by then?
I can say that the City Attorney's Office would endeavor to bring it back within 30 days, but at most, we would be looking at 60 days.
Can I add a comment? I don't know if this can be part of, I need to amend the motion, but I think, you know, I do want to thank the Orange County Rapid Response Network, as well as the OC Justice Fund, for also advocating and showing some of the trends. And actually, when I spoke with them, they had mentioned there had been an increase in denial for not helpfulness. And I'm curious as to if you have the numbers and more information as to why that is. But an alternative suggestion, given that, you know, we had suggested for someone to speak, maybe having them come to a presentation on the UVS process and what's actually happening on the ground can be also helpful. So if you don't have the case study by then, maybe having them here and then the case study together can be helpful to move forward.
If the commission wishes to have a guest speaker here, I think you would amend that motion and add that in there, or make a separate motion to bring them back.
I'll make a separate motion and make it easier.
And just a clarification on the motion, I think the Santa Ana Police Department should be here. I don't know if it needs to be that specific, but if we could have Ms. Ponse de Leon back, if we can include that in the motion.
I don't believe that would need to be part of the motion. I think that we can, the City Manager's Office, City Attorney's Office will make sure that a representative is here from PD.
Okay, perfect.
Does that also have to be the case for outlining specific organizations, or can we just send you the names of agencies or institutions that we think are matter experts in this field?
No, we can bring it back. We can bring that back. Send me some names of someone that may be of interest, we can look to bringing them forward. I'm assuming legal organizations, like attorneys? Okay. And also the data for some of the numbers that we've seen in the past year.
Okay, so, Commissioner Castillo Lofton?
Yeah, before you take the vote, can I get clarification on what motion we're voting on?
Yeah, please. Yes, so it's to bring back a study session item on the topic of helpfulness with examples of different policies of the UVS certification at a future meeting.
Is that correct, Commissioner Mejia? Okay, thank you.
Okay. And that motion was made by Vice Chair Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Mejia. So Commissioner Castillo Lofton?
Yes.
Commissioner Geronski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mejia?
Yes.
Commissioner Perrea?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Vice Chair Carpenter?
Yes.
Chair Vega?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
And then can I make the motion for the presenters? Okay, so I would like to make a motion to have the Orange County Rapid Response Network, as well as the OC Justice Fund and the Public Law Center come to a presentation. It can either be a combination of all three or some of these organizations with others, but folks who are, have both public as well as grassroots experience of what's actually happening on the ground to better understand the UVS.
And that would be specifically to the UVS topic?
Correct, only UVS topic.
Would you want that concurrent, or do you want a separate? I'm just curious.
I think all of them together would be helpful.
No, I mean, do you want it concurrent with our other study session for helpfulness, or you think we should have a separate one for that?
I think that depending on whether we can have it, because I think the point was that it may be done by the next month or not, right? And so if we have it, that'd be great, but if we don't, we can still have this meeting and then follow it up with that meeting, depending on the time.
I do want our staff to be prepared with the information on helpfulness, so giving us the 60 days will prepare our staff to make sure that you have a comprehensive study session, that we fully review the certification process, and maybe even bring back some recommendations. So that would be 60 days. Now, if you want the presentation prior to that, then that would be at your discretion and your motion and vote.
Yeah, I think the presentation within the next 30 days would be helpful, because then by then, we have heard the, you know, policy from Senator PD's perspective and um, somebody who's actually working with folks on the ground on these issues will have direct experience. Um, and then we'll have the case study, and then that can give us a better discussion, I think, well-rounded discussion.
I'll second the motion.
Can I make a motion, uh, to also reach out to the Western State College of Law Immigrant Rights Clinic? I believe they're matter experts on, uh, this specific issue, and I think that it will be good to have the legal, uh, legal framework for us.
Can I say something? Um, I, I think, um, I would like to know the numbers first before we bring in ten different people to talk about this issue.
Should I share some of those numbers?
If the number is fifty, I'm, I'm just not sure that having four different organizations come in about the same topic would be a good use of our time.
The, the numbers range from two hundred to less than five hundred.
Let me just give you an example. Twenty thirteen is the last, uh, twenty twenty-three is the last one I have, and there was a total of three hundred and seventy-two, uh, U-Visa applications received with a hundred and sixty-two approved, ninety-nine denied, seventy-eight referred to the Orange County District Attorney's Office, uh, twelve referred to other agencies, and twenty-three incomplete forms. So that, again, that's a total of three hundred and seventy-two for the last reportable year that I have for twenty twenty-three.
I guess my follow-up comment would be, um, reasons for the denial, if we can learn about that before, um, we get different organizations. Um, and the organizations mentioned, I like the Western, um, College of Law, but the other ones I'm not familiar with, so I don't know what their agenda is, or if they're biased, or how they would know the information. So I'd like to research them before, um, I agree.
The Public Law Center is a public law center, but the other ones are grassroots. And I think that, um, just because someone says grassroots doesn't mean that they're biased, right? It just means that their work comes from working directly with individuals in the community. But they have the most experience working directly with folks with, in determining with U-Visas, um, in particular, which we, we're not able to capture in the data.
I just wanna add, oh, sorry, Commissioner.
Can I ask Assistant, uh, City Manager Vasquez, uh, the, uh, City Manager Vasquez, uh, have, have the City Manager Office met with groups regarding, uh, U-Visa concerns, U-Visa certification concerns?
I know City Attorney's Office was in the process of meeting with the Public Law Center. If you can just share a little bit about that.
Sure. Um, yes, we were in the process of meeting. There were some ongoing discussions about concerns they had raised. Um, at a certain point in time, probably six, five, six months ago, something like that, I had reached out and I said, you know, I had, I had inquired as to what the specific concerns were and exactly how, examples of how the Santa Ana Police Department was allegedly, um, I don't wanna say violating, but not, not following the proper process under federal law. I received no response to that, to that inquiry, and I received no communication subsequently from them. So...
Which, which were the entities that reached out?
Hmm, I don't know. I'd, I'd have to search my email to be able to let you know what that is.
Okay. Cause I think it would be helpful to just understand the, to just know the history that has happened in attempts to like, you know, have a conversation on this, um, just for the, for the commission to be updated as well.
Uh, we can definitely follow up with an email with that information, um, within next week, by next week.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just wanna make one comment, which is about the, the biased organizations. Um, I think it's impossible to be unbiased and, you know, to, to only invite organizations that have no bias, cause everybody is biased. Um, I don't think there's any harm to inviting organizations that have a bias one way or another. I think there's benefit to hearing, you know, people who have differing perspectives, and if there's, you know, somebody that's biased on one side, we could balance it out by inviting somebody that's biased the other way.
And also just to add to that, as, I mean, I work in research and I do mostly quant work, but I also do qual work. And when we're looking at data, right, so it would be really helpful to have the data, um, to see not only what rates, right, we, people love to see percentages, but that's actually really unhelpful, because it doesn't tell you anything. It just tells you who's, how much percentage being denied and how much is being accepted or other. But what would be helpful is if you can have indicators of what, what leads to someone to be denied, right? What are these, where are we seeing this difference? And that would be helpful, um, to have better judgment. But I think a lot of times, we think about knowledge and numbers as this very objective way, and as someone who does quantitative methods, nothing is completely objective, because how you set up your data, how you analyze it, comes with a sort of analytical tools. But a lot of folks who collect different type of data, which is more on the ground, one-on-one, on this, um, local knowledge production, um, doesn't mean that they're biased, you know? And so sometimes organizations, I wanna make this clear, because sometimes organizations that are more grassroots and don't have this big data collection, doesn't mean that what they're seeing is untrue.
Just a response. So, I think before we bring in, this is just, um, an idea, doesn't have to be agreed upon. Um, before we bring in people with their different experiences that may be in favor of or, um, disagree with the process that Santa Ana PD uses, I think we need to be more informed. So when we get opinions and when we get, um, different people coming in saying it's unfair and helpfulness is not defined well, uh, we have the knowledge to make a decision. It's kind of like, um, you know, there's, there's footage of an incident, but we've never seen it, and then people come in and tell us what happened, but we've never seen it, so we can't comment well, and we, we don't know if, if that's the case or not, cause we haven't had the information given to us. So if we can get the information given to us and then listen to different opinions, I'm more than happy to, um, accommodate that. I just don't want, um, I guess, the other way around.
Yeah, and to clarify, these are experts in the field too, so they're not random people with random voices. Um, but I agree. I think if we can have the data, that would be helpful. And individual level data, not aggregated data.
So, um, Commissioner Perrea, just to respond, um, to your inquiry, it was, I was communicating with the OC Rapid Response Network. Um, I had responded to their inquiry on November first. You know, I, I mentioned I was looking for specific examples of, um, Santa Ana PD's mishandling, alleged mishandling of U-Visa applications. Uh, someone by the name of Sandra De Anda responded, uh, three days later, so on November fourth, saying, "Thank you for your prompt response. We are taking a week to compile the trends we're seeing with U-Visa denials. Thank you for confirming this on your end. We will get you that information closer to next week. Thank you for your patience." And again, that was in November of last year.
Thank you. So if I'm my understanding correctly, um, we're asking, um, that entity to come and tell us why they felt, or, yeah, I guess why they felt these U-Visas should have been approved. Um, so we're gonna hear in their perspective, is that...
No, that was not my intent of the motion. My intent of the motion is to have, um, the OCR, uh, R, uh, Center, as well as the Public Law, the Orange County Rapid Response Network, the OC Justice Fund, and the Public Law Center. And it doesn't have to be all three, it can be two of them, right? If it takes a lot of time, um, to come and discuss as experts in the field of, one, what is the U-Visa process, because none of us are experts in that. I'm not. I'm learning, right? Like, you made your point. We're all learning here. So learning from experts in the field who know this work can be helpful. Not telling us what we should be do, should be doing, but rather explaining to us from a knowledge of expertise, what this process is, first of all, and then two, what this process looks like on the ground for Santa Ana specifically, because they are the ones working with clients currently going through the process. So they're not coming with random information. They're actually coming with information that is applicable to Santa Ana, um, to the city, with folks going currently through the process or have gone through the process. And so by having someone who is an expert in the process of this information, as well as knowing what some of the issues might be, can help us better understand what are some policies that we can improve. It's where I'm coming from.
So in other words, um, essentially hearing, uh, this presentation, but not this particular one, but have the U-Visa process be presented to us again, but from a, a different, um, different experts?
Correct. This is coming from a certification process, right? And this is coming from a process of what it should be, from, from a federal and local processes, as well as what is actually happening on the ground. Because as we know, policy that's applied is not always applicable the same way, and I think that's where it arises a lot of issues, right? So we can better understand what are some of the problem solving that we can do.
Is, is that an appropriate, uh, place to, uh, do that here? I feel like that would be like kind of, uh, you know how in our ordinance, it states that we need to be doing community outreach? Uh, would that be more suitable in that, in that, uh, forum where we go to them and they, and they explain to us, like all the grassroots?
I, I mean, it could be, right, a form of asking other organizations. I, these are the ones that I know, um, have been the most active, in particular for U-Visa, not for all immigration work, but for U-Visa. There could be other that I may not know. That's prob, that can be the case. Um, but I think the way I view this is no different than when we had ACLU come and explain it from a, a different perspective. So remember how we had the, um, gentleman, I'm forgetting his name, come and have a discussion about, um, the use of force, and then we had ACLU come and have a discussion about use of force? It's the same way, right? So we're having, uh, actual, uh, agency who certifies this and explaining and walking through as their policy, and then we'll have a organization that, that also works with Santa Ana PD, uh, to get processes happening, and we just have a different perspective of more what's actually happening on the ground.
Can I, can I jump in for a sec? I just have a, that, that actually raises a, a, a concern, I guess, for me, um, in that I totally agree that we should have people come who, you know, can provide more context about, um, you know, the U-Visa process and, you know, the helpfulness standard and, you know, how community members are impacted by it. Um, I'm just thinking through like, whether we can name specific organizations, cause we, in a motion, because we can't compel people to attend a hearing. And so maybe we suggest that, you know, we suggest some organizations, but not mandate that they, that they appear.
That's fair, because I don't know if they would. I, I don't know everyone, so yes.
Can I make a suggestion, and something that I've seen work really well in previous ad hoc committees of the city council or commissions, is to be able to break it down into two parts. And this is gonna be, so we're gonna go back to Commissioner Carpenter's idea of the, of the study session. I think this has to happen within the study session. But I think there's two, two things here. One is, uh, having a matter expert, uh, come and, and explain to us and, uh, the, the nuances of, of this process. I do, I am strongly recommending for the Western State College of Law Immigrant Rights Clinic to come and be able to present to the commission, uh, regarding this process and the, the things, the challenges that they noticed, and the process, and the nuance of the things that we have discussed. And then there's experience component of it, which includes community organizations. But I think, I think the commission will benefit greatly from having that perspective on, from academic legal institutions that, uh, understand this very well, for us to have the best, uh, the best education on this, and then go into the experience part, which is important. Um, but that's my strong recommendation, at least on how we can structure the work-study session. Um, so, this, yeah, suggestion there.
Just briefly, I just wanna comment on something. Um, Commissioner Perrea, with regard to Western State College of Law, that happens to be my alma mater, so I believe that I should be able to hopefully arrange something like that. And I think that that is more, um, to, to Commissioner Castillo Lofton's point is, we certainly cannot compel anybody. There's obviously massive availability issues too. The more entities you try to bring in, the more, uh, scheduling conflicts you're going to have. So I think really, from a, from a procedural standpoint, if you're looking to structure a motion, it should probably be a motion that is directing staff to make best efforts to bring certain groups here. That gives staff the flexibility to, uh, make the scheduling determinations needed and to work out the logistics of bringing you back in substance what you're looking for.
Let, and just to comment on that, I, I totally agree with what you're saying. It makes a lot of sense, but I think it's more important that we have the city's perspective first, with the police department, as we discussed, then that second meeting. If that can be agendized that way, that would be my preference. I think that's important.
But, um, that would be after sixty days, so...
Well, no, that was, that's the maximum, they said. They, they could probably make it happen within the thirty-day period, and then you have your thirty days to get the other group together. I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Uh, we did wanna come back within sixty days to make sure you had a thorough review of the legal, but, um...
And then after that, we would invite other organizations, right?
Or, or it could be that same day?
Well, it depends if there's questions or whatever, right? I mean, I don't know. That, it seems like a lot of information, kinda...
I think there's benefit to having everybody in one day. It would be probably very long. Um, but it would be kinda interesting to see, allow people to respond to each other.
That's, that's a good point.
Yeah. And if I, if I may, I think that this also will give us a framework on how we can tackle future policy conversations moving on, cause this is not gonna be unique to the U-Visa process. There's other policies that, quite frankly, we haven't come up with like a process on how we're gonna do that. So I think that this, I would consider this the first try on how we're gonna approach community, uh, policing, uh, recommendations.
Well, I think that the motion needs to be restructured then, correct, to state that staff will make their best effort to get some of these people that are suggested. So I think that...
Sure. I'll reward it. Do I have to reward it, or do I have to...
Well, hold on just a minute. You made a, you made a, a motion to begin with, and it went around and round and round and round and round. Now you're here to ask her to make another one.
No, that was approved.
That was, yeah.
Commissioner Mejia made a motion about bringing in other entities, and that was a discussion here. But I don't think that motion was, we had a little bit of conflict with staff, because we...
You should've called yours back, though.
No, 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 ma'am. No, I don't want to call one back.
We did vote on, on one motion and it passed, um...
I don't think so.
Abby, can you repeat the prior motion, please?
So the, the prior motion was for the topic on the study session, for the topic of helpfulness with examples of different policies of the U-Visa certification at a future meeting. That was voted on, and that passed seven-o.
And that, I presume, will be here, uh, will have in sixty days. So we just need another motion to invite, um, other entities, um, right?
Yeah, so...
And so we can just start listing them, who, just to, if you guys want.
I think, I think the suggestion was actually to not list them, cause I list, I made the motion earlier, but I listed some. And I think the suggestion was to not list them, so that we actually allow the city attorney to make that decision based on...
You can suggest them.
But we can suggest, yeah.
You can't say, "I want this person." You can suggest them, the city attorney to get you.
Sure.
And that's what I meant, like, give your suggestions.
So I will, um, define my new motion. So I moved to have, uh, both a expert in U-Visas from a legal perspective, as well as an organization who's working directly with the community, going through the process of U-Visas, to come do a presentation on the one legal practice of what it should look like, um, and also what we are seeing on the ground, um, occur. And I suggest, and of course, doesn't have to be this, I suggested the Orange County Rapid Response Network, the OC Justice Fund, um, or the Public Law Center.
Can I amend that to include a suggestion to have Western State College of Law Immigrant Rights Clinic to, to reach out to, to, to the institution as well? That's my amendment.
Any other suggestions to, to that list?
I'll, I'll make the second.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
Okay. So that motion was made by Commissioner Mejia, seconded by Vice Chair Carpenter, and that was to direct staff to bring back presenters, um, for experts in, for legal perspective, and an organization for U-Visa certi, U-Visa certification process. Presenters such as OC Rapid Response, OC Justice Fund, OC Public Law, and Western State College of Law. Is that correct? Okay. So Commissioner Castillo Lofton?
Yes.
Commissioner Geronski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mejia?
Yes.
Commissioner Perrea?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes, thank you.
Vice Chair Carpenter?
Yes.
Chair Vega?
Yes.
That motion carried.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much for the presentation.
I have one final question, and I think might add a lot of clarity to this whole process. When you have somebody calls in about a crime, they witnessed it, they're undocumented, do you, does the police department say, "Hey, by the way, we have this U-Visa program"?
No.
So how do they get to that?
I mean, I listen to Spanish news radio all the time. It's, it's all over the place there. It's very, it, there's a lot of push for it, mostly from attorneys.
But just to be clear, it's not, they're taking their statement or everything else, and they say, "Here's a card." There's no mention of it at that time, correct?
It's not our protocol. If it's mentioned incidental, maybe, but I, it's not our protocol. We don't train that.
Vice Chair Carpenter, I would just point out that, uh, as of the sanctuary city ordinance and the policy is, you know, sets forth, that this, the, this concept of immigration status should not even be coming up in the, in the context of the conversation between law enforcement and witnesses or victims.
I fully appreciate it, and you can... I fully appreciate it. And you can say it to anybody. I could be here illegally, right? Just because you've gotta separate race from this issue. I could be here illegally. You could say, "Hey, by the way, this is a service we have available." You could tell that to everyone and anyone, correct?
I think in that context, you would be bringing up somebody's potential immigration status, if you're talking about the UVisa process. All I'm trying to suggest is I think that that is from a legal perspective. That's probably why PD, and I'll defer to PD, but I would imagine that is why that they are not proactively suggesting a program that would potentially violate the UVisa, or the sanctuary ordinance and the sanctuary policy.
Yeah, well, I'll disagree with you, because I mean, you're not asking about immigration status. You're just offering a service. I could offer you the service for homelessness. I could offer you the service for whatever. So that's just an opinion of mine.
If I may, a friendly suggestion to that, because I understand Commissioner Carpenter's what you're trying to ask. We do have a website that has "Know Your Rights" tab. Can we include information about the UVisa program and that as well?
Yes, we will do that. That will be our next update.
I do have one more question. So earlier you had mentioned, I'm curious as to what type of correspondence does San Ana PD have with the applicants? Like, do they get a notification that the application has been received, or they only get a notification once it's been denied or approved?
We don't notify them that it's been received, because as we get them, we process them fairly quickly, and so we just process them and send the response.
Okay, so then, oh, so then they just know whether they got denied. And in that letter of correspondence, is there any details as to what was denied? Like, was it a format? Was it incorrect information, not enough information? And I know earlier you actually used the word advocacy, which I just kinda wanted to highlight. Advocacy means to push something in a certain direction, but all San Ana PD is doing is providing information. So you wouldn't be advocating for anything just by providing information as to what the person did right or wrong?
The details that are provided, if it's certified, the details are the qualifying crime and the helpfulness. If they're not, the details of the non-helpfulness and the effort to reach out for helpfulness. If it's a matter of an incomplete form, that's also noted on the form.
So they do know why it's being denied, like with specifics?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you again. And so we're gonna move on to the next item on the business calendar, and that is Police Oversight Commission Bylaws.
So I will defer this item to Attorney Jonathan Martinez.
Good evening again. As you all may recall, at the last meeting... Sorry, thank you. At the last meeting, we did discuss bylaws, and we did discuss certain items that would like to be, that the commissioners would like to see included from our Planning Commission bylaws. Those were incorporated within the draft that you have before you. Also was just some... I think we also discussed this idea of coming back with a draft prepared by staff for items that also would be necessary to be included. So that, through the cooperation and assistance of the city manager's office, as well as the police department, and obviously the city attorney's office, we developed this set of draft bylaws, fully understanding that this will not be the final product. That was something we also discussed, was that this would be an evolving project that would occur likely over a few different study sessions before we could actually create a polished final product that would end up going to the city council for approval. So with that, I'm sure you've all had a time to review these proposed bylaws. Again, this very first preliminary draft, and I'd open it up to comments.
All right, who wants to start?
I have a comment right off.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Section 1B, and you've got it highlighted, "Our staff only." Could you give me a little clarity on that? Did you want that to be, that it's staff only, or are we saying that the chairperson or the commission can request special meetings?
These were just some internal notes on just processes and procedures that we wanted input on from the commission. It's, again, it's not going to be a definitive, "This is what will end up in the final product," but these were just items of interest that we thought, again, from a very procedural standpoint, is this something that the commission would be interested in having the authority, or would the commission prefer that that be delegated to staff to make the determinations?
My opinion, as long as we're on the subject, is no, it shouldn't be up to the staff. It should be up to the commission members.
I agree.
I agree with that.
And if I can, can I also make the suggestion that we vote on these changes, so it's clear that it's a majority consensus, rather than just saying, you know, "I agree, chair agrees, maybe other people don't agree," just so we know that that's clear? Is that okay with everybody?
I think that would be fine. The issue is, is that I don't want it to just be restricted to the highlighted items. There's a large... I think procedurally, one of the best mechanisms, I think, to move forward here is comments from each commissioner addressing their largest concerns or what they would like to see changed
Agreed.
for city manager consideration.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yeah. Well, again, my recommendation is we strike the staff only.
Here's my recommendation. I think that we should go commissioner by commissioner and allow each commissioner to make their comments on the bylaws as a whole, so that we can then, you know, kind of see where there's overlap and where people diverge. But we should have commissioners make all of their comments at once.
Sure.
Suggestion, if I didn't make it clear, I wasn't suggesting like line by line, each commissioner. I think commissioner by commissioner, get through everything that's most important or most troubling, or that you definitely would like to see in and remain, and we'll aggregate those notes.
Well, since I already started, in section 10, if the commissioner wishes to propose an item of replacement on future meeting agenda, the commissioner shall prepare a written memorandum describing the proposed item and submit it to the city manager. I think we need to strike that. I think we should be able to suggest agenda items in the meeting. I think that's a rather cumbersome, and also it doesn't allow the other commissioners to know what items I would like to have on the agenda. So I'd like to see that struck. Again, that's section 10. I don't know if you have it at page 3 or 18. There's an overlap there. And under Article 7, Conduct of Public Hearing, Section 2, I think the chair should be allowed to extend the time for someone speaking. I don't think that should be a hard and fast rule, that it's only three minutes. And some clarity on Section 4, Appeal of Decision. A decision or ruling of the chair may be appealed to the commission by request of any member. The chair shall call to see if the chair shall be upheld. Section 11, Amendment of Bylaws. I'd like to strike the last sentence, and must be subsequently confirmed by a majority vote of the San Ana City Council, and I'm sure there'll be some discussion on that. Section 12, I think it should be the last, should be struck more than one-half of the members of the commission present, just of the members. I think it should be a simple majority. And Section 15, if we could have a little bit of clarity on that, the Roberts rules, I don't know if they're gonna apply to everything that happens here or not. So that's... Well, hang on a second here.
Is there an order to go next, or should I say something? Okay. Chair?
Vice Chair, what are you doing?
There was one more I was looking for.
Sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
Vice Chair Carpenter, do you have anything else?
I think he does.
Oh, okay.
I'm still looking for one, but please go ahead. I can come... We haven't been cut off at one speaking, I don't think.
Thank you.
Who would like to be next?
I'll go.
Go for it.
Thanks. Section 1, it says arts. I think that just needs to be deleted.
Thank you for that. That's when you use
Love arts.
some templates.
Just a question about the special meeting. I guess I'm envisioning an issue, and I'd like the bylaws not to create issues. Let's say we all want a special meeting, but staff doesn't have the capacity. What would happen if this was our bylaw?
It would still be at the discretion of the city manager.
I understand. Thank you. Section 2, quorum. What is the definition of majority, four or five?
Commissioner, just for clarity, the bylaws are broken up into an article and a section. So, no, that's quite all right. I think what's probably, in reality, going to happen for staff is, we're probably gonna be looking back at the video of this meeting. So that's why it's gonna be helpful to hear the article, the section following, and then that will allow us then to kind of get to the particular point to consider the notes.
That's Article 3.
Yes, excellent point. Article 3, Section 2, is quorum defined by municipal code? Or is it four or five? I'm just not remembering.
I believe that quorum is the... It is a majority of the amount of members that are present. So if only five of you showed up to any given meeting, a quorum would then become three. Right now, with everybody here, a quorum is four. It's a way to say majority, but it's more specific to the members present, because the majority of this commission is four, but a quorum is not always a majority if there's not seven of you here, if that makes sense.
Understood. Thank you. Is there an excused versus unexcused absence? That's in Section 4, under Article 3. I just didn't know that there was a difference.
Yeah, I believe there's a definition of that in one of the... It's under absences or notes. I think it'd come up in a previous... We'll make a note of that, and try and locate that.
No problem. Article 3, Section 7, Commissioner vacancy. It's okay. The only thing, I don't know what it means, ceases to be a qualified elector of the city, because we're technically not elected. So maybe that doesn't apply, or it does, and I'm not fully understanding it. And then...
Article 3, Section 7, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the last half says, or ceases to be a qualified elector, because we're appointed...
What did she say? Three, six, seven?
I believe that this was one of the sections that was pulled over from the Planning Commission bylaws. So again, I'll have to look into that.
Okay.
It is a quasi-elected appointment in the sense that you were appointed, or recommended and appointed by the city council. So that could be language indicative of, again, that, you know, there is an elector component to you as commissioners. But again, I believe this was pulled over from the Planning Commission, so we'll look into that.
Thank you. And then I think the last one I had was, I'm gonna disagree with Vice Chair Carpenter on, under Article 7, Section 2, the time. I don't think the chair should have discretion, because then it could be like a perspective thing, and it's too subjective to me to give this person more time as opposed to not... Nothing to our current chair right now, but I just think three minutes objectively every single time is a good idea. That's it. Thank you.
If I could respond to that, my thinking on that was, we have a person, like we had the person on the phone. He probably had another 30 seconds to go, "What the heck?" And I did find the other section that I wanted to discuss. It's Article 6, Conduct of Commissioners, Section 1. I don't know how much of this is gonna end up, is by ordinance or what have you. I would like to see the enforcement remain with the commission rather than the council. I don't know if that's even possible, but that would be my other suggestion.
I would like to go next. Who would like to go next?
I can go.
Go ahead.
So I... I'll just be brief on the one stat. I won't address things that have already been addressed. For Article 1, Section 6, do... I don't know if it was inadvertently left where it says, the San Ana Municipal Code. Do we have to enter the actual ordinance code in there or not? Or is it intentionally left that way for a reason?
Article 1, Section 6, Additional Duties.
So it says, "Officers of the commission shall perform such other duties and functions as may from time to time be required by the commission." The San Ana Municipal Code, I'm assuming that what guides us is the ordinance, so the code would go in there, the bylaws and the rules and regulations of the commission, or in general.
I think that one is more suited for general, because there could just be so many different ordinance numbers, sections to reference.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. The other one is Article 3, Section 1B, on the special meetings. I agree that special meetings should be allowed by direction of either the chairperson, the majority of the commission, or staff, so just removing the "only" part. And on the Article 7, Section 15, so the last one, correct me if I am wrong, but I recall at the start of the commission that we do not follow Roberts Rules of Order. We follow some other rules of order that I can't recall at this moment. But it says here that Roberts Rules of Order. So do we need to correct that, or is that correct?
I would have to look into that, Commissioner. I do not recall when we discussed the exact rules of order. Maybe it was in the... Maybe it was in the initial training on, like, Brown Act, that it was brought up.
No, it was because, I recall, because it had to do with me. Sorry, I'm so sassy today. The Roberts Rules of Order, I was informed, it was one of the initial meetings that we did the voting for chair and vice chair, and then part of the motion was that instead of starting all over again to vote for me to have ran, the vote took on first. And the reasoning behind that was, and I'm sure we have a recording on it, was that because we don't follow Roberts Rules of Order, that order doesn't actually apply, and we follow X Rules of Order, which I can't recall what it was. But that was told. So, I don't know. Which one is it?
It's Rosenberg's Rule of Order.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah.
Very good.
Which would need to modify that tie vote. A tie vote is a fail. Yeah.
Thank you, Abigail.
That is all my end. That is all my end.
Commissioner Perea?
I actually don't have any, any additional comments, just thanking the city staff for working on the bylaws. I really appreciate it. So I was very happy with what was brought forward to us.
Yes, I have, I have comments. So for Article two, section one, that deals with selection of officers and terms, so it doesn't actually discuss terms. I, I didn't see that. There's like a hyper, there's a, a section that it refers to, which is section two, three, two, eight of the San Ana Municipal Code. I didn't see any discussion about terms. And so I think it would be good to have terms in the bylaws for chair and vice chair positions. Where? Oh, okay. I didn't, I didn't see that in three, two, eight.
If I'm correct, just to interject on that, the terms are listed in two dash, two, three, six.
In, in any event, I think it would be, instead of referring to the municipal code, I think it would be beneficial to have it in the bylaws specifically, just to make it easier for people to understand what the terms are. So that's my first comment. And then for Article three, section one B, with regard to special meetings, it says that special meetings may be called at the direction of the chairperson or by a majority of the commission members or staff only. I recommend that it only be by a majority of the commission members. I don't think that the chairperson should have the authority to, to call a special election, or not special election, special meeting on their own. I think that, I, I just, nothing against Chair Vega, but I just think it, it's too much power consolidated in one person, I think. And so I would, I would just make special meetings callable by a majority of, of the commission. Let's see, section, article, this is gonna be Article three, section four, with regard to absences, it just says that there needs to be notification by either email, telephone, or through message relayed by staff. It doesn't have any temporal requirement, and so it might be good to include some clarification as to when somebody might, you know, reach out about an absence. It would be good to have a potential cutoff, so people, everyone's on the same page. Maybe like, you know, by like midnight the day before, something like that. So Article three, section six, it says, it deals with discussion, and it says that each commissioner may speak for up to five minutes on an agenda item if he or she desires, and then once all commissioners have had the opportunity to speak, commissioners may speak again when recognized by the chair, but it doesn't have a temporal requirement. And so reading that just on its face suggests that there would be no time limit for follow-up comments, and I think it would be good to have a time limit for that as well. So for Article three, section seven, commissioner vacancies, there's a requirement that if a member of the commission absents himself or herself from two regular meetings of the commission consecutively, unless by permission of the commission, that they. That they, their, the office shall become vacant. I think that, that. Is a pretty severe punishment for missing two consecutive meetings. I, I would recommend striking that and just leaving it at the six. If you miss, you know, fail to attend at least half of the regular meetings, then that, that would, you know, result in you potentially losing your office. Article three, section 10, with regard to the agenda, it says the city manager or their designee shall be responsible for placing items on the meeting agenda. If a commissioner wishes to propose an item for placement on the agenda, the commissioner shall prepare a written memorandum. And then it says, the memorandum shall be included for consideration at a regular meeting as a commissioner requested item, and the commission may by a majority vote of its members present direct that the proposed item be added to the agenda for a future meeting. But there's no, I mean, that could be indefinite, you know, it could be a future meeting a year from now. And so I recommend that we clarify that, the vagueness there, and make it at the next meeting. So shall be added to the agenda for the next meeting. And then the other thing with regard to, to that same section, section 10, is that I think we should clarify that if the commission votes and directs that the proposed item be added to an agenda, that the city manager, the city manager or their designee shall then add it to the agenda, because it doesn't say that right now. It just, it says the city manager or their designee shall be responsible for placing it, for placing items on the agenda, but not something that this, this commission directs them to do. Let's see. Oh, on Article three, section seven, going back to commissioner vacancies, on failing to, to, to attend at least half of the regular meetings of the commission, it doesn't say anything about canceled meetings, and so maybe we could clarify to say like canceled meetings don't count, because we have had cancellations in the past. Unscheduled meetings?
Un-scheduled meetings.
Oh, okay. And then on Article seven, section two, the time limit to address the commission, I agree with Vice Chair Carpenter that there should be some mechanism to allow people to speak longer than three minutes. But I also agree with Commissioner Said that it shouldn't be, that that discretion should not be consolidated in one person. And so I would say, I would recommend that we, we vote, that there be some mechanism by which the commission can choose to allow people to speak longer than, than the three minutes. And on Article seven, section 11, amendment of the bylaws, so right now the requirement is that at least four members of the commission at a regular special meeting must approve an amendment, and then it must be confirmed by a majority vote of the San Ana City Council. I agree with Vice Chair Carpenter that our ability to amend our bylaws should not, not be tethered to the city council. But I don't think that, if we're gonna amend bylaws, it's a pretty significant thing, and so I think it should be a super majority, or it should be a unanimous vote by the commission. And I think those are all, those are all my comments.
Commissioner Goransky?
No, he did fine. He did fine.
I'll just give like some brief comments. For special meetings, I'm okay with just striking only. So chairperson, whoever that person is, the majority of the commissioners and staff. For public speaking, I would, I would prefer to keep it at three minutes. And I'm, I'm actually okay with, well, the thing is about voting to give an individual more time, is that if we had other people prior to that person coming up, it would be unfair for them that they got three minutes, and then we took a vote on another person, and we gave that person another minute. I think that would be kind of really difficult to do, unless we voted in advance to give everybody extra time. So to avoid all that possible confusion and unfairness, I think it's good to just keep it at three minutes. And then for, for the agenda. I would like to see us being able to add items to, to another agenda, but maybe include that in to our closing comments like we have in the past, instead of having it be in a written form. And then. Yeah, I would like to be able to do that. And I think that's it. Yeah, that's it for now.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Not free, but, so on that, actually, on section, sorry, on Article three, section 10, the agenda, would this suggest that only if voted by the majority, then the item would be placed on the agenda? So in, in the event that there's an item that somebody wants to put, and then it's not voted by the majority, it will not get it on the agenda?
That's correct, unless the city manager asks for it to be on the agenda, so the city manager can agendize, or it would be up to the majority of the commission.
Okay, so if, if the city manager deems the item to be still necessary for an agenda, they would make that decision despite the outcome of the vote?
He would have the discretion of placing an item on the agenda.
Okay. I think that, I don't know, this is really hard to, especially because these are gonna impact future procedures when we're not here. It makes it really challenging to be so specific, you know, and kind of limit somebody's ability to put something on the agenda if the majority of folks don't agree on it. But I do think that we should be able to, one, verbally communicate that we want something during the meetings, as well as to submit an email request. Do we really need to prepare a memo, though? Or just like a sufficient enough information as to explain why?
This is a model that our city council uses. Currently, our city council, the city manager prepares the agenda for city council meetings, or the mayor has the ability to add items. If a council member wants to add an item to the agenda, we ask that they submit a memo to us, and that memo is then discussed at the council meeting. And if, if the majority is interested in bringing that item forward, then we bring it forward. So it's, it was a standard, a standard process that we currently have for council. That's why it was written this way.
Thank you for clarifying.
And that's a council requested item, but is that how other commissions do it as well?
I'm not aware of how other commissions operate their agenda. I can get clarity from, say, the recording secretary for the planning commission, or some of the other commissions for clarity, but regardless, that's the model that is being, is being put into these bylaws and being proposed now for this particular commission.
To be clear on that, you're saying that this memo is presented before the meeting to be added. What this is saying is that we need to present a memo before it ever gets to the agenda. What you just said, if I'm, if I'm correct, is if the council person wants to put something on the agenda for that meeting, that day, it is not there, that's when they present this memorandum.
It would actually be agendized. It could be agendized. So the way it would work, before we post the agenda, a memo would be prepared. We would then place it on the agenda, and then at, at the following meeting, that's when you review that memo that was prepared by your fellow commissioner, and see if that is something that you want to move forward with as body.
I think that's a sensible requirement, that we have something in writing before the meeting, before the next meeting, so that we could discuss it, and we could review the proposal before the commission meeting. I think, and I might be wrong on this, but I think where people might be, you know, a little reluctant is the word memorandum, which suggests that it's like a very detailed, detailed, you know, requirement that you have to like overcome to, to be able to suggest something.
It's a template that we would have. It's like if, if you write a little paragraph, I, we could just pop it into the template and share it with you for approval. And then, again, that would be the item that you would like to agendize. So you're telling us why you would like to agendize that item. We'd bring it before the council, or before the commission, and then you would have the availability to vote on it. It can be short, short little paragraph, like you're saying, an email. Okay, we could take that email, pop it into that, let you look at that for your review. But we would want a, a description of the item that you would want to agendize and a description of why.
My concern is that's, that is not gonna limit us from placing items on the agenda when we're in a, a commission meeting. Just like tonight, we had some items that we'd like to have placed on the agenda. That's my point here, that, that we can continue to do that without the formal process of submitting a memo, so it comes up at the next meeting and so on.
And that's what we had mentioned, too, that we want to be able to do it verbally as well, not only written.
We've done that with Comlink, too. The president will come with maybe another suggestion we should talk about, you know, that, that evening, and he'll take a vote, pardon me, from the rest of the board. And if the vote says okay, you know, we'll accept it and go ahead, and we don't have to go through a bunch of rigmarole. It's, it's up to the board to decide whether they want to discuss that or not, or add that to the agenda for the evening. That's very simple to do.
Well, to Commissioner Hea's point, this happens in the past, some people suggest things they don't get on the agenda. And again, I, I don't see why the opposition to having things agendized when we're here.
I think that the idea here is to create, well, let me, let me take a step back. The call from this commission for quite some time, and staff heard the call and brought this, these bylaws, so for, for robust discussion, the call was to create consistent, codified systems and procedures by which all of you, all of you could have your thoughts, your opinions, your, you know, items you would like to see on the agenda, have them heard in a very formal process. That would be considered, and it would be the same for everybody. So this process is a process that would allow each and every one of you to create a memo. It will not be complicated or overly detailed, that each of you can take time to consider. When, when the agenda goes out, you would see the memo, you would take time to consider it, you would take time to put thought into it, you would then come to the meeting, prepare to discuss it. There would be further discussion, then there would be the ability to vote, and at that point in time, then at a later meeting, there, I understand the temporal aspect, at a later meeting, it could potentially go on the agenda. I think the issue is that previously, when people are kind of just verbally saying what they want to see and what they don't, that doesn't give this body the opportunity to really consider it and think about it. And that is, that is truly what we're trying to avoid here. So this is the process that is being recommended. It's the best process, and it, I, this is going to give, I believe, the commission the best, most opportunity to really put thought into what items may go on the agenda. Apologies, Commissioner.
Can I make a comment on that, Jonathan? So the other, the other issue with having agendized items, something to an agenda, like we just have to vote on it as is, but if we can, uh, uh, recommendation that I made, then we can come in, you know, we can review it, the person that suggested the agenda item.
Actually, I do think that it does provide a more uniform and more fair way to agendize items and have the ability for us to kind of think and process, because I think sometimes when we're giving new information, we might not fully know whether that's something we want to discuss or not. And later we go home and we figure out like, oh, that was an important item, I should have voted yes or no. So I like that. My question is, are we going to be provided, the, so we as commissioners will get the memo that the commissioners submitted to discuss, is that gonna be, also be able to be public? So would that be part of the agenda package?
It would be an item in the agenda.
Okay, in public for everyone to, okay.
Go ahead.
Real quick. And if, if we vote on an item, somebody submits their memo, we vote on the item, we agree to have it on the agenda, and the city, city manager decides he doesn't want to have it on the agenda, do we get an explanation?
I would hope so.
Yes, you would get an explanation.
And what if we disagree with that explanation? My, my point being is, do we have the ultimate control over what gets in agenda, or is it coming down to the city manager?
Come on to the mic, city manager.
Council, right? And you see it. Look at the last city council meeting, there's, I believe, two or three items that were council, city council directed. So a city council member brings that item before the fellow council members. The letter request is publicized as part of the regular agenda, similar to the, both the business and consent calendars, and then towards the end, you have that component. And that letter, the city council request item is itemized. This is a topic, this is why me as the city council member want this item to be discussed, and I'm looking for my colleagues to support. And I'm looking for my colleagues to support majority so that we can have that item and direct the city manager and staff to work on it, right? Which is one of the ones we talked about. East First Enforcement on some of the issues dealing with drug abeyment and supported housing component. And if you notice, then the itemized was places as it requested item, and you have the council members discuss it. And if you noticed, they didn't say, go get and do the work in 30 days. They actually had more questions. Your commissioners, in this case, will have questions. Says, you know what? That makes sense, but can we even do it? Does the government code allows us? There's housing sections that they prohibit that already. There's federal law that protects tenants, right? And so at that point, before we direct staff to do X, Y, and Z, to post an ordinance or program, let's do more research, right? And this is when we get majority vote. In this case, you might think one idea is Mr. Vice Chair Carpenter, I want to talk about this, but it's only one. We can't have staff go out on one request because it's a personal item to one issue. This is the whole point I have in this level of discussion. It allows the commissioners to say, you know what? That's pern. This is significant enough. This is what the police oversight committee is supposed to do, right? And your colleagues agree. So it allows us to do the research, right? We can come back with a recommendation, our policy change. We can come back with, you know what? We have a statute that prohibits that. But now you know. And so we, we're all supposed to do that. The whole idea is how to make a policy that allows the council, I mean, the commissioners to put things on the agenda that gives the majority consensus so that staff can do the adequate work to provide the aspect. Not for the city manager to undermine that legitimacy of the commission, right? No different than, here are the questions, and I'll say it out loud publicly, right? No different than some commissioners says, well, I don't want the city council to assert our authority as the, as the police oversight commission. In the end, they couldn't assert my authority, right? That's just the reality. And so it is typical. Now, you asked a question. Is this a typical aspect with other commissions? Your commission is very specific, right? It's very different than the other commissions. The commissioners from the planning commission, because that's where I came from, don't usually present items to be discussed. It's literally staff-driven. Same thing with E-TAC, right? That's a very different component. Yours is very specific, we're precise powers. This is why we're doing, going through this. Technically, if you look at your municipal code section, only the oversight director will be authorized to rise a meeting. So we shouldn't even have a meeting because we don't have an oversight director, right? But working with the spirit of the ordinance until we improve it and make the changes that we need to, so we can have meetings, so that we don't start from scratch a month from now, two months from now, three months from now. And that's the balance that we're trying to do by having this type of discussions and meetings. Make sense? So now, I won't override it because, I mean, it's not about Alvaro, it's about the city manager and about the legitimacy of the commission. That's the component that we have to preserve. Is the integrity of what a commission means to municipal code section and to the process. Not to allow the city manager to assert just commissioner components. Just like I can't assert city council requirements or authority.
Yeah, good. Thank you for that explanation, city manager.
In line with that, then, I assume that we'll have an agenda list, because obviously, we can't get everything on every meeting. So if we do have additional items that, it would be nice to have an agenda list. Let me put it that way. For items that don't get heard that time. And I think one difference between our commission, no offense, and between that and the council, we're not asking staff to go out and do things, to change laws or build things or anything like that. Our requests have typically been for information and that type of thing. So I think that is a fundamental difference between us and the council. We're not telling staff to go out and spend money.
So I'll just say that I'm gonna, after everything that I've heard, I think I would like to keep Section 10 as is. Article three.
Did any other commissioners, I'll have to weigh in. Staff, do we have, do you guys have enough direction? Or do we need to state our opinion on certain items? Because I feel like certain items were touched on more than others.
No, Chair, I believe we have plenty of, I wouldn't call it direction. It's, it's input and it's opinions and thoughts. We'll definitely take all of those into consideration when it comes to making potential revisions and edits to the bylaws and bringing those back for further consideration.
Great, thank you.
We can bring him back at the next meeting?
Awesome. Our vice chair, you look like you have something to say.
Yeah, real quick. So this looks like it will be on our next meeting. We're kicking the discussion about helpfulness to the following meeting, correct?
Yes, correct.
And we possibly might have our, are we have agreed that we're going to have our outside experts come after our meeting with the, with the city staff, or concurrently? Concurrent, okay, thank you.
All right, I think that's, that's all for item four. So that ends the business calendar. Now we move on to staff comments. Do the staff have any comments?
Just one comment. At the last council meeting, our mayor announced that she had created an ad hoc committee with council member Phil Becerra and council member Ben Vasquez to review the police oversight commission and their duties and responsibilities.
Thank you. Wait, I have a-
A question on that. Are they talking about changing the ordinance? I'm not clear what that ad hoc committee's purview is.
The committee is discussing potential amendments to the ordinance.
No offense, I guess we have to wait for the city council to let us know what those are, even though we're on the commission?
The city council makes laws and amends the laws of the city. Vice Chair, so yes, we, we kind of all do when it comes to the ordinances. And those, whatever potential changes, if any, remember, those need to be voted on. They need to be discussed and voted on at council. So it's not as though these discussions are happening only in the ad hoc committee. There'll be, there will be, if they're brought to council, there will be discussions had there, and there will be votes on those.
Jonathan, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
The mayor convened the ad hoc committee?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I think, I'll save my comments for my own commissioner comment.
I just have a question about whether you know what prompted the ad hoc committee? Like what was, what were the circumstances that resulted in reevaluating the police oversight commission?
I'm not, I'm not aware specifically. I know that there were discussions had here in these, in this very room, at these very meetings, about potential amendments to, to the ordinance. So again, I'm not saying that's directly what it was, but it certainly could have been because there were very robust and, and often discussions about issues that were perceived with the ordinance.
Speaking of our illustrious ordinance, how's the manager coming along, or director?
We have no update on that. No update on, on that as of now.
No, no information?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're moving on to commission, commissioner comments. I'll start to my left, Commissioner Pereira.
Thank you, Chair Vega. Jeez, okay, well, I'll first start with the, that announcement of the ad hoc committee regarding revising or visiting the police oversight commission meeting. I strongly encourage each commissioner to speak with our council members and mayor. I find it a bit disrespectful that the commission has spent so much work on, on this commission. And at the very least, the mayor should have consulted this body regarding any changes that need to happen to the, to the oversight commission. So I am very curious as to what is being discussed, what will come out, and the recommendations that will be brought forward. But at the very least, this commission should have been engaged if there's any conversations about changing what we do here. So I am extremely concerned about this, and I hope the rest of my colleagues are concerned about, about this as well. But I'll, I'll hold additional thoughts until I see the outcome. But I, I don't know, we can convey strongly through city staff that, you know, as this process is going, that this commission should reengage on any changes because, again, we have spent so much time, you know, trying to make this work. So I, yeah, I'm just very, I'm very surprised. Additional comments that I have, I think probably the commission has, have seen some of the news that have come out regarding notifications to Santa Ana Police Department from ICE. I think those are very concerning. We had a conversation here, the police oversight commission meeting on March regarding, you know, the sanctuary ordinance. And as well, I had requested at the time for annual reports to the commission regarding, you know, ICE contact with, you know, S.A.P.D. I believe S.A.P.D. has followed through on, on the spirit of the ordinance. But I think that this new report that has been raised, that has been brought forward raises additional concerns. So I will hope, I think that we get maybe those monthly reports. I'll, I'll be preparing a memorandum to the commission. But I, I am very concerned about the, the recent reports that came out, particularly with transparency of ICE activity in the city. So those are, those are my comments for now. Oh, and we do have a new pope. And I was, you know, raised culturally Catholic and not very, practiced much of the religion. But I, I did know that we, the pope that was elected today was from the United States. And he's, has expressed a strong sentiments regarding immigration. So I think that those, you know, we are looking forward to see. I know that most of our community here in Santa Ana are Catholic, so that's something that, that has been joyful today. Thank you.
Commissioner Said.
Just thank you, everyone, for your hard work. And thank you to the commissioners for bringing all of your perspectives, and have a great month.
Commissioner Mihail.
Yeah, I just want to thank the staff for the bylaws template. I think it was really helpful, and it made the conversation a lot easier. Also want to thank S.A.P.D. for the U-Visa presentation. I think this has been one of the meetings that I think can be, can become fruitful in a lot of the policy changes. So hopefully, this is one of many. I also would like, I know we asked about this earlier, about the data, but I'm more than happy to also offer that for the U-Visa data, since it's not, it's 300 and something, up to 500. And I don't know if this is a lot part of the ordinance, because I think we are, we, according to the ordinance, my understanding is we have access to data, right? Data information. So because of that, I'm also curious, like, if we can get individual-level information. And I'm more than happy to do the analysis of, like, what are the indicators that lead to those that do not get, that are considered unhelpful? And maybe that can help the S.A.P.D. make better policy decisions. And I, I kind of want to echo Commissioner Pereira's concerns about the notifications with ICE, especially given that the last presentation at least depicted a different picture to us as commissioners in having the data with the public information kind of built a little bit of distrust with, with the community. And I'm hoping that we're able to mediate that and address that concern. And that is all on my end.
Commissioner Goransky.
Do you have your mic on?
Thank you again. I'll start at the beginning, in case, in case everyone didn't hear me. Thank you very much to all the city staff that's here all the time with us for the great job that they do in helping us get information and have, have the information, you know, right in our hands all the time. One thing that kind of concerns me, and I'd like to know why. This gentleman that called us tonight here, and we listened to him at the very beginning. Why is the city or the, I'm concerned, anyway, as to why the city council is not addressing that? And why has he had to write three times whatever it was? I don't know. Maybe we received, maybe it was one of the ones that we received over the email. I think we've received about three of them, complaints that have come in. And he said that he'd sent three of them in, and he hadn't heard from any of that, any of them. Is there a time limit that they hold a complaint and then get rid of it? Or that, in other words, that's what he thinks is happening? So that kind of concerns me. Why do people have to do that if that's true? And why is he not being listened to if that's true? Those are my concerns here lately. It's kind of been bothering me the whole meeting, wondering why that didn't, really didn't get addressed. Okay, thank you, and have a great May, great Mother's Day. We haven't got a lot of mothers up here? No, of course not, okay. But Happy Mother's Day to your mothers. Okay, bye-bye, thank you.
Commissioner Castillo-Lautzen.
Yes, I would like to start by just thanking city staff for being here and for all of the work that you guys put into putting the bylaws together. I thought they were really helpful, and it's great that we're making progress on that. So thank you. I'd like to thank Ms. Rosa Ponce León for her presentation on the U-Visas and, and how the Santa Ana Police Department goes about implementing the, the statute with respect to U-Visas. I'd like to thank the city manager for being here and for sharing his thoughts on the bylaws. We really appreciate hearing from you. I want to express gratitude for my commissioners, my commission members, for the productive conversation today on the U-Visa, you know, the U-Visa presentation that we got and on the bylaws. I think that we're really kind of finding our stride, and we're working really well together. And I, that just makes me really happy, so thank you. And then I'd like to end by, you know, expressing, not necessarily concern about the mayor's ad hoc committee, because I, I don't want to jump to conclusions and assume that it's, you know, the mayor has formed an ad hoc committee with respect to the oversight commission to implement changes designed to, to limit our power, right? We've made, as Jonathan mentioned, we have raised issues about the ordinance in prior meetings. And so it's possible that the mayor is maybe giving us more power in the sense that, because the, the oversight director hasn't been hired yet. But I will say that it would be great to work with the mayor and the ad hoc committee together on any potential changes to the oversight commission, to, to the ordinance that applies to the oversight commission, particularly because any changes are going to impact us. And Commissioner Pereira's right. We've worked really hard over the past two years to, to make progress together and to kind of find our purpose, so to speak. And so it would be great to work together with the mayor on that initiative. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Vice Chair.
I'd like to start with a question. Are we, as citizens, not commission members, allowed to contact the respective council members in regards to the ad hoc committee?
Yes.
So we're free to talk to them on any subject that pertains to the commission?
You're free to talk to them as the public? Their council members are open and available?
Thank you. And with that, again, I do thank everybody[1724.18] And with that, again, I do thank everybody for everything they've done here. It was a great presentation and I'm truly hopeful that we can come to some consensus on the bylaws and hopefully at some point here, start actually doing what we're set to do. And again, thank you for that.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I just want to start off by saying that my heart goes out to the Santa Ana High School community. I'm sure everybody may have heard about the tragedy that happened yesterday. So my hearts and prayers goes out to all those families that were affected. I had a question in regard to the ad hoc. Those are closed session meetings, right? Or is, are those public?
Those are not public meetings.
Okay. And when they, when it comes for, when it comes to the city council with the recommendations from the ad hoc, can we make public comments even though we're commissioners? Can we, after hearing what they're saying, can we go and make a public comment? Hey?
You're not restricted from making any comments.
Okay. All right, well, those were my comments. So the next police oversight commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, June 12, 2025, in the city council chambers at 5:00 PM. I hereby adjourn the meeting. The time is 7:29 PM.